All right, good evening and thank you. And first of all, I'd like to apologize for not being here for your conversation tonight. Unfortunately, I had two subcommittee meetings of the city council involving supplemental budget and increased bond order for the wastewater treatment facility, and I had to be there. So I was hoping I could get back for part of it, but fellow members of the school committee will fill me in on how it went, and I know that those conversations will continue. So I'd like to call to order the meeting of the school committee for Monday, November 24th, 2011. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Mr. Menon?
Present. Absolutely emphatically present.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Ms. Weeha?
Present.
Mr. Decanter?
Present.
Mr. Keon?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Could we please stand to recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission statement. The Newbury Park Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development and engagement of every student. Within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning, our students experience rigorous academic challenge, are intellectually curious, and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are an inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help achieve this mission. Members of our school community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity.
Have read the mission statement. We'd like to open with five minutes of public comment, which is a good amount of public conversation. If you have anything you'd like to share with us, either on the agenda or any other way, there's another opportunity later. Please feel free to stand up and share your name. If we can move to the extended agenda, do we have warrants?
We do. I move that the following named bills of the Newbury Park Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $334,499.94 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There's a conflict with the mayor. Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Present. I move that the following named bills of the Newbury Park Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $5,280.53 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Passes unanimously. You have a set of minutes and you'd like to move them.
I move to approve the Newbury Park School Committee regalia meeting, the minutes from the Monday to November 7th, 2011 meeting.
And a second.
Second.
Comments, conversation, you have the minutes?
Yeah, I just, I had a detail I wanted to add that I don't think made the minutes. When we were talking about the Hawaiian trip proposed February 2012, I asked a question about the trip involving students going to Costa Rica this past summer, and I believe it was set at the table that that trip was done on an individual basis, which is not correct, and was actually done through a group called World Challenge. And I guess I wanted just to get that noted for the record. That in fact, on that trip, there was one NHS staff person, Ms. Salazzo, and two World Challenge staff that essentially proctored that trip.
My understanding was that when we voted to approve this, it was voted on the condition that there would be a second chaperone and additional educational or additional information sent to the superintendent, and that's not reflected in the motion here.
It is clear.
Right? That was our vote, correct?
Yes.
So, Mrs. Kennedy, if you would be so kind as just to change that to approve the February 2012 field trip to Hawaii with a second chaperone and the stipulation that chaperone may send the superintendent more specifics.
Any additional changes or comments? Would you like to approve the minutes as they have been amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Dr. Kerbel, would you please introduce our student representative?
The guest student representative tonight, Skylar Whack. Skylar, Skylar is going to, Skylar, sit right next to Mr. Keon, please. Now, this is, I'm going to tease Skylar a little bit, you know, I'm involved with Superintendent Unplugged, and Skylar's behind the camera a lot of times, and I told him how valuable he was, and because we talk about, we're in front of the camera, but the person behind the camera is very important. Well, Skylar, you are now in front of the camera.
I'm expendable. So, I am taking part of a creative writing class here at the high school, and I'll try to keep this brief. I know that there's a lot more important stuff that you all need to get to, so.
Just a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I assume it's important. We can cross a project that the Pettingill House approved us to partake in, and it is the Poems for Pettingill Project. It is nonprofit. Every last cent that we, that you give us will go straight to the Pettingill House, and it is essentially a small $5 donation to a personalized, down to the very, down to the very theme, the tone, and three phrases or sentence fragments that you prefer to have in your personalized poem, haiku, essay, short fiction, anything that you can think of, it can be yours. And the tone is usually just between serious and humorous, and the themes can be anywhere from a holiday-themed poem or short fiction. It can be an emotional breakdown or breakup or a re-bonding of friends. It can be something, like something simply missing a person, or a get well card in a very, very, I don't know, what do you mean, or, I'll go with dramatic tone. And the, and if you have, if you think that there's something that you prefer to have in there that's not listed here on the very, very, on the very detailed sheet that we give you, you can add a couple of sentences of information that you want, that you prefer to have. You can either have this sent to you or to another person. This is entirely optional. If you have any questions about what you are doing, you can add your email address, and that again is optional. You must have your first name and last name on the sheet. You must have your address, state, city, street, zip code, all that good stuff, and you must include your payment with your order form right here. And.
How do we get the order forms?
The order forms are conveniently placed right over at the door.
So this is not a fundraiser limited just to the school committee and the people in the room?
Oh, yeah. This is also at the Newbury Park Public Library, and I believe it is also at the Jabberwocky Bookstore.
So if we wanted to conjure up a poem about the Man of Steel, Superman, if it was, maybe attributed to Dr. Kerbel?
Sounds good.
You should just send a Superman poem to Dr. Kerbel. It's all up to you.
Skylar, may I have your last name?
Whack, W-A-C-K.
Thank you.
Skylar, this is a project that you guys have done. This is not the first year you've done it.
Uh, no. To my knowledge, this has been a repeated process, and we've done pretty well so far.
I was going to ask, do you know offhand how much money you've been raising?
Offhand, no. I do know from just, and this is just paraphrasing Mrs. Albo, the teacher who's assigned this project, that we have raised quite a lot of money, and it's made the Pettingill House very happy to engage in such a unique and really satisfying project that, quite frankly, it's the holidays, and we don't really want to give out the lame Christmas cards that everyone seems to get around that time. We'd much rather prefer a poem or a story about the holidays or that kind of thing, and that's really popular, and that really, really works for this project, and I hope that you all would, at the very least, just take an order for me to take a look at it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Skylar. It's a wonderful project, and Mrs. Albo, the wonderful way of finding out unique opportunities to celebrate, just terrific. Thank you very much. Thank you, Skylar.
Thank you, Skylar.
Skylar, I have to ask you, is it cool being in front of the camera?
It's an alien experience to me.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the nurses' health report. If you would join us, you're welcome. I wrote, Dr. Kerbel, introduce.
We are extremely fortunate to have someone like Beverly Hyens Lacy to be our lead nurse. She is, I think, amazing, so organized, and all of her work is always done with such diligence, and she thinks about the kids and thinks about the system, and so I appreciate all that you do, Beverly. So she's going to give the nurses' health report based on the 2011, 2000, I'm sorry, 2010, 2011 health data?
And I had sent some material to you in advance, and I realized this morning that I need a copy of this there, so I'm just going to hand you some graphic around if you'd like, because I'll be referring to it just a little bit. So, I think I'd just like to start by saying that for the nurses, I think we all see our key role as being to ensure that children who have health issues are prepared for school, that whatever it is that their disabilities or their health needs are, that we help facilitate meeting their needs so that they can be in class, ready to learn, just like every other kid. And, you know, looking at this graphic, the role of the school nurse is quite varied, quite complicated. It's more complicated as time goes on. And if we think about the direct nursing services, I had sent you some data. We can take a look at the tables briefly. All of our offices are really busy. You see that last year, we had close to 20,000 visits in each, in our schools combined. And I think one of the things that's important is that the percentage of visits returned to class, we have a 92% return to class rate. And the reason that's important is if you look at schools and districts where they don't have nurses, the return to class rate is much lower for children that have illnesses. That's national data, and I think we can feel pretty good about the fact that the kids come to us, we need their help needs, and they're able to go back to class. The other thing is that we're seeing a real change in the scope of the nursing credits given, the skills that are required. If you look at the number of children that have healthcare means, we have 635 kids that have some sort of health issue. Most of those, we don't have to worry about in the health office, but you can see we do have, last year, there were 244 children that had a healthcare plan. What a healthcare plan is, is a, we basically sit with the parents, with the teachers, and develop materials that say, okay, a child has this particular condition, and this is how we're going to manage that child in school. And I went back to some data, and I realized, well, back in 2008, '09, we had 110 kids with healthcare plans, so we've more than doubled the kind of healthcare plans. And some of that is just doing a better job, like children with asthma, we can be sure that we get those care plans. But we are seeing an increase in the conditions and severity of conditions, the complexity of conditions that they have. For example, children are coming to school, we don't have many of these, but we have had children with PIC lines, and those are like internal central IV lines for things like antibiotics. That was something that was never seen in schools previously. Certainly, we have children that have their own ventilators, that have life-threatening seizure disorders, G-tubes. Lots of skilled nursing is required at this point. And this, you know, with improved technology, with the way that hospital care is given now, and people being moved out of the hospital very quickly, we're really an extension of the hospitals and, you know, perhaps home healthcare and clinics and that sort of thing, that at one time, we would not see these things in school. They would be done in hospital, they're done at home. So another one of our key roles is safety, and we spend a significant amount of time on preparing, emergency planning, training, teaching. We've spent a lot of time with our local AMR folks. We have a wonderful relationship with them, and I want to publicly thank them for all the work that they've done with us to help make sure that we are prepared in the schools. They've come out and done some really nice training with the nurses, and whenever we need something, they've been there for us. And so, you know, we sit on crisis teams, we sit on emergency planning committees, and we also take all that information that we learn, and then we teach the teachers, and to make sure that the children in their classrooms, that they're prepared in case a child that has a health issue has an emergency. And so last year, we had nine 911 calls, which was a good number. At my school, we had six. We had quite a busy year last year. And, you know, I want to say that, you know, with all our preparation, that lives were saved as a result of the work that we've been doing on safety and the skills that the nurses have been developing. Of those 911 calls, some of them were just, you know, they were urgent sort of things, you know, broken something that needed to be shipped to the hospital. But there were several that were life-threatening issues, and I, you know, feel very proud of the work that our nurses have done, and the response of the staff, and the response of our local AMR and that sort of thing. And they have also praised the response in the school, that we've set all the things in place that need to be there to make sure that the kids are safe in school. Let's see. So another, another role of school nurses is in the public health arena. In fact, that's a historical role. That's where, where school nurses sort of came out of, is public health and giving immunizations. We don't give immunizations anymore, but we're really, we're responsible for tracking to make sure that children have immunizations that they receive, that they're supposed to receive. We also have a responsible for screenings and referrals. So if you think about a child being ready for class, knowing that, you know, that they have the glasses that they need, that they're able to hear, and that sort of thing. Again, on top of the close to 20,000 children we saw, we did another 3,800 screenings of children, and 120 of those were referred for further services. So it's pretty, pretty busy, a lot of activity going on there. And the other thing, you know, in terms of public health, last year, last couple years, thankfully, we haven't had H1N1 flu, but that was quite, quite the thing that we had to deal with. But that's something always in the back of the nurses' minds is, okay, what is going on in my school? Gee, I've seen a number of kids that have had pneumonia, or I've seen a number of kids that have done this or that. Do we have an issue here? And so that's always something that we're paying attention to. We're doing surveillance on a regular basis just to make sure that we don't have a problem that, that should be identified and brought to the attention of the health board. Another piece that, oh, as you can see, the graph, another piece that nurses are involved in is education. We really do collaborate very closely with teachers. We work with folks in the classroom, work with folks in the community, and I have listed some, some sample activities. Our high school nurse in particular has been very active, and one thing that has happened at the high school over the last several years is the CPR program was re-initiated as a result of grant money that she got in, and continues to get resupplied on an annual basis. That program has been expanded so that it was initially just for seniors, now it's sophomores and seniors, and there's a CPR program now there as well. And this is something, again, working with AMR, that they're helping with that as well, and making sure that students are educated in that important skill. You know, and some of the other, other things that we're involved in, in the classroom, you know, just thinking about the district goals around health and wellness, about what is it that we as experts in that area can do to support that? We've been involved in grant writing, we've been involved in, you know, thinking about wellness programs throughout the district. Nurses do go into classrooms and provide, you know, education for the teachers in that way. So, you know, I think that in terms of our successes in the past year, and in previous years, and currently, I really do think that, you know, we're succeeding at making sure that children are prepared to be in class regardless of their health issues, and that we do continue to provide excellent, standards-based care. Nurses are continuing to build their skills, and I think that everybody's been doing a great job with that. And I mentioned challenges, I already mentioned about the complexity of the health concerns that it's just becoming more and more, just more and more complex. The kids are coming in with, with very significant concerns. Mental behavioral health issues are a concern as well. Any child with one of these concerns, it's very complex in terms of managing them, and we are seeing an increase in that. We're not really, we're looking at the data differently, working with the state. The state requires us to provide report on a monthly basis and an annual basis, and statewide, they have started asking us to tabulate information on some very specific things in our mental health. Because you know, you have a kid that comes in and says, I don't feel well. Well, maybe it's not that they don't feel well, they actually have other things going on, but they get tagged as being, I don't feel well. So we've got some other markers. Maybe as time goes on, we'll have better data, and that's been something we've talked about, is data, and how do we collect the data, and that sort of thing. So that will be something we're looking at some more.
Any questions?
I was just curious, a couple months back, a group of people came and met with us and talked about a pilot program for mental health services within, I think they really started in the middle school?
Yes.
And eventually, hopefully, moved into the high school. I was just curious if you could tell us how that program is going, rolling out, tell us where it is?
Well, I know that, that there has been movement in that direction. I can't answer directly about where they stand in terms of the high school, in terms of the middle school. I know that the program, folks have been working on the steps, but I can't answer that for certain.
I'm sure we'll get Paul.
Yeah, I know that steps are being made, but.
Thank you. Interesting that, because you cite that, you know, research shows that 70% of mental health care for school-aged children, so we know those numbers are increasing, and I think that this was something that was long overdue for us to put a fee-for-service program in the schools, and I know that it's something that is needed, and, you know, I'm hearing from parents that there's something that they would really like to see happen. So I'd like to see us move on this a little more quickly, since it's been several months that this, since we've had this presentation, and I'm a little surprised that something hasn't happened at this point. And I was just curious, looking at your charts, what was happening in March and May that there was those spikes?
Well, May is kind of interesting.
Testing?
You know, that's why I actually, illnesses, you know, in March, March is always a huge month. We always stay, because there's flu, there's strep, there's ammonia, there's, everybody's sick. And so that's not a surprise. May, I actually, I remember actually, March even made wondering when a kid's going to get well, because we had stomach bug, several stomach bugs going through the schools, and it went right through May, and you can see the data there, those were, those were sick kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I actually have a few questions. First off, and I know this is not a bunch of time, but I just need to ask this, how many FTEs for nursing health services throughout the system right now?
There's five, and then the nurse leader, we have, I split my time, I've got a half.
So five altogether?
Five.
You know, because it's always my concern that those services are spread really thin throughout the schools, and I think that needs to just be focused on that, you know, that's a lot of health office visits, and that's only one aspect of what health services is looking out for, and still, I think, a number that, if we had more of, would really help. Second thing, relative to your comment about pandemics and in reference to H1N1, in these years where there hasn't been a threat, is there any way to, if you will, ramp up on pandemic preparedness?
We do have, we put a lot of stuff together. We had done some planning, pandemic planning prior to H1N1, and we have all sorts of materials that were put together in response, and I think that also from the state, I mean, we got so much from this made, that I think that if anything happened, we'd be ready to just take everything.
So things are queued up, if you will. I mean, it's always a concern of mine that with even things like cleaning supplies, it's important to have good stock of that, so, you know, custodial services can do their job and keep the place nice and clean. I also had a question about, I know this probably wasn't part of it, but all the buildings have defibrillators in them?
Yes, they all have. In fact, we have multiple defibrillators in each building. They're maintained by the nurses, and again, AMR's been very helpful with that. We've had to locate additional defibrillators for some specific reasons, and they were able to get them for us, which was a wonderful thing. But we do check those, you know, I can give you the numbers if you'd like, but, but yes, we do have a well-run program.
And then lastly, but kind of related to the whole heart issue is, to a cardiac, cardio care, whatever, is heart scans. And I've read, I've talked with people who sponsor programs, I know there was a study by Harvard University a few years ago, with all their athletes to discover if any of them had any general issues, and thankfully, a few did show up. Has there been any move afoot to maybe try to access some type of heart scan servicing for, for instance, athletics here at the schools?
No, and that was a question that came up from Dr. Kerbel. Last year, we had that conversation, I believe. As far as I know, there isn't any data that would indicate that that would be something really helpful for our students. Yes, that's something that's been looked at in other places, and, you know, it's not something that has been looked at here.
Do you think if there was perhaps an interest at medical school or school of public health that might want to get involved with that? Do you think that Newbury Park might be a district that could be interested in it?
Am I doing some research?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, that's all I have.
Any additional show?
Beverly, I, I know that the nurse at the high school is running a CPR program.
Yes.
Do we have requirements for our teachers?
There's no requirement that we must take CPR, but we do offer CPR on a regular basis in all of schools, and again, you know, the nurses were doing that for a while, providing CPR, and AMR has stepped up again, and they have been offering it for us, and, I don't know, we just had a group at the middle school and at the Knox School. And I don't know, we just had a group at the middle school and at the Knox School, a group of teachers. So we're beginning to see more people respond to that. I think one thing that's been great is CPR has changed. It's now hands-only and it's easy to learn, it's not at all complicated. And I think people are more willing to learn now than they were before. So we will continue to do that, to offer that.
And we have a process for recertification?
Yes, it's put out and said, you know, that you can, you can take the class, you can, you know, if you want to recertify, so yes.
Thank you.
Two questions. First of all, your BMI, your report on BMI, I found interesting. I was wondering if you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there any chance you could reference that to average, you know, national averages or local averages?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to mention about that because that is one of the screenings that we do. And new report, actually, we're in pretty good shape for that data. If you look across the state, we are, the children who are at the 95th percentile, you know, the overweight and obese categories combined were much lower than what you find on the average of the state. And then for cities and towns that are really having some significant issues, there are cities and towns where those numbers are 46, 50% of children. And in fact, in some of the grant writing that we've done, we haven't been able to use BMI data to say that we have a population of overweight students that would help support our grant writing to get money on health and wellness because it really, the kids are pretty, you know, they're pretty good. And this number, by the way, has not changed. We're not seeing any increase. You know, each year, it's grades one, four, seven, 10, so each year is a different bunch of kids. You catch them every so many years, but we haven't seen a trend towards an increase. It's been pretty much the same for, I don't know, as long as we've been doing this in my testing.
One more question. I'm not sure when it was, probably sometime in the last six months, we were talking about concussions.
Yes.
And injuries. John Delas, how is progress moving towards?
Yes, we're making.
Policies and procedures there?
We're making some very good progress on that. We, at the end of the summer, the state came out with their regulations, which are very specific, I don't know, it's like 11 pages long of information. We've had several meetings, we've had, one of the requirements is that you have a committee pulled together that includes, you know, school physician, nurses, teachers, of wide variety. We have met once, we've got another meeting coming up shortly. Our draft policy will be, needs to be sort of prepared by the end of this year so that we're able on January 1st to say that we have put our policy together. It will be a little bit more time, of course, for sort of the final approval and that sort of thing, but we'll be well within the requirements by the state. And I would say that in terms of our management of concussions and students with concussions, you know, at the high school, the high school sports, I think we've got some very good systems in place. And some very good collaboration between the nurse, the athletic director, the trainer, and certainly all of the paperwork and information that we're getting from families. It's been working very well, I think. And all of that, we're working at, the nurses, when we see kids in any of the school building, we're using the same, same systems. And that's something also that we're looking at with these, with this policy is not just to save kids who are engaged in sports, but anybody who in the district has a concussion to be using sort of the same set of rules and systems.
Any additional questions? I actually do have one. Is, and this isn't a sort of a yes or no question, but just, I would be interested in your comments about whether there is a relationship with increase in kids who have health cares and our inclusion efforts, whether there's an intersect there at all?
There is, I think. We do have, you know, some children with, you know, as I mentioned, some pretty significant health concerns and some, you know, the ones who are more severely affected also tend to be ones who are, you know, that have learning disabilities as well. So I think that there is definitely an intersect there.
Do you have any comments?
I did, I just wanted to recognize Bev. Bev and I co-chair the School Health Advisory Council where a lot of this work is discussed with the council. As Dr. Kerbel said, Bev prepares detailed analysis, reports, and really is the leader in moving that information forward to the community. As far as safety is concerned, she serves on our school crisis teams, as she mentioned. We have a citywide safety committee. And each and every year, at the beginning of the year, I bring police, fire, AMR, Bev, and public safety together to the table and we discuss what our school's going to look like opening day. And so Bev has a large role in that too. So she does an incredible job for us and Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bev.
Thanks, Bev.
I'm going to have to leave here. The next item on the agenda is a discussion, sort of a roundabout discussion. It's going to be a discussion, it originally started out as a discussion of superintendent's goals. And based on some workshops that Dr. Kerbel, myself, and Steve Cole attended at the Nass Association of School Committee, it changed how we were developing the superintendent's goals. And what you got was a lot of information with no explanation. And as a result, we had an interesting conversation here the last time. Then we went to the conference and said, "Oh, well now all of this makes sense." So as a way to introduce a conversation about the superintendent's goals and where they came from, we wanted to share with you some just quite extraordinary things that we learned.
Can you see?
I'm going to be getting up from this.
No, wait.
I'll be psychic.
You're multicolored, you know, you're.
You guys are seeing me hallucinating. Okay, I'm with you. We wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we learned that are really, really fascinating, really interesting about the direction the state is going in. Because in fact, what you saw in our initial delivery of superintendent goals to you was the way things are going to be looking in the future, how superintendent's going to be evaluated, how administrators and how teachers are going to be evaluated. So I, I'm not exactly sure Mitch. We sent out a presentation to you that we attended several workshops for. And I think there are several key slides that are really worth talking about because they're going to, I think, explain both how we ended up, where we ended up with superintendent goals, and also the direction that things are going in with teachers. Many of you know that the state has adopted a set of regulations looking at how teachers and superintendents are going to be evaluated, that essentially evaluates them in two different realms. The first realm has to do with their skills, pedagogical skills, their management skills. And then the second set engages in this conversation that's been occurring on a national level and it's been quite an animated conversation, which is, we can assess whether a teacher is a good teacher by observing, but we could also, what can we learn by what's happening with the kids? And we've often seen this conversation framed as, what are the student achievement levels? And in fact, there is a matrix that the state is now producing that looks at that, but looks at student growth, which is a different concept than achievement. It's slightly different. We'll talk a little bit more about it, but I'll just find that first slide here that makes most sense. And Mark and Steve should absolutely feel free to jump in because they did participate in this.
January 10th, the state is coming out with a, the new evaluation system for teachers, principals, and superintendent. And major focus for all three really is student achievement. And this was, so let me just say this, this is a slide presentation that former associate commissioner, who's now is the special assistant to the commissioner of education. This is her presentation to, in fact, she, this is a presentation to not only those that are at the workshop, but she's moving along, around the state, talking about the new evaluation system. So you want to talk about this or that here?
Sure, sure. Actually, if you could just go back one. The new regulations are in place and what we're going to see is sort of the paperwork that backs these new regulations. And keeping in mind again, this is, when they talk about leaders, they're talking about administrators. So these are the sort of, this is what the regulations are designed to do, to promote leaders and teachers' growth and development. So to look at, look at where the teacher, where the superintendent, where the administrator is and move them along a continuum. That goes literally from, you know, unsatisfactory to needs improvement to proficient to exemplary. The piece about student learning requires multiple measures of learning, multiple measures of student growth, not growth, it's not just going to be based on NCAS, it's going to be based on patterns and trends, which tells you that it's not just going to be one year's worth of data as we move forward. Obviously, we're starting now, but as we move forward, it's going to be looking at patterns and trends and student growth that are happening in the classroom, that are happening in the schools, based on student growth percentiles that we're seeing in NCAS. It might be based on DIBELS. Plus, it's also going to be based on whatever formative and summative data manufacturing that we're doing, whatever we develop to do our assessments also is going to have to be a piece of this. The idea is to sort of recognize excellence in teaching and leading that exists and then begin to sort of use that as a basis in the school, in the classroom, among other teachers that we're not going to specialize so always coming in. Because in fact, a system that's becoming more and more sophisticated is going to identify the expertise that you have in your own building, in your own system. It is going to set a high bar for professional status and I think that this is also really critical. It's going to shorten timelines for improvement. And depending on where, and we'll show you the slide, depending on where you end up, timelines can be as short as 30 days to improve what you're doing. So that's fairly dramatic. And again, this is going to apply to superintendents, principals, teachers, councils, and any position requiring a license. And what they've done is developed a format that you got an advanced look at in what we initially sent out, and now we're going to try to explain it again.
All right, the, because we, because new report signed off a race to the top, as of 2000, September 2012, we will have to implement this new evaluation system. What you're going to want to see is just some snippets of it, okay? Because it's, after January 10th, there will be regional meetings and there'll be meetings with, at the, regional meetings for school committee members as well as teachers, as well as administrators to really understand the system. We are going through a process right now to try to understand what this is. So you're only going to get a partial presentation. Don't expect us to go over all the details because we're still going into details, but you should get the overall picture. I think what's key is that there's a process for not only teachers, but principals, central office, and superintendent.
This is what the evaluation process is going to look like. And it is a continual cycle. There's a period of self-assessment and tools for doing self-assessment. This is working with your sort of, your supervisor or your mentor or your advisor in which you take a look at the self-assessment, you analyze it, you set goals, you develop the plan, you implement the plan. Along the way, you're taking benchmarks, you see how are we doing, how am I doing, how things are going, a final evaluation, and then that is going to lead into the next period of self-assessment. So it's going to be, it's going to be ongoing. And depending on where you end up on the continuum, it's a process that will take a year or it's a process that will take two years, that will occur every two years, depending on where you end up sort of on the matrix. Anything you want to add to that, Steve?
No, there's explanations. And I think these explanations are probably in the slides, okay? So I'm just going to go through them quickly. One of the things that I want to do, aside from this, is I see Todd Levitt is here from the president of the teachers' union. We want to work together in order to get the information out to our teachers so that it's cohesive and it makes sense, that they feel that we're all working on this together. I have opportunity to speak to the staff, tip of staff, for about 10 to 15 minutes just to give them an overview. We will, I'll be meeting with Pat tomorrow, trying to work on dates for the future so that we could have a new teacher evaluation team, which include members of the school committee, members of the teachers' union, and as we, because we will have, at some point, we will have to negotiate some things. We will have to turn into the state what our evaluation system will be, as well as anything that was negotiated. There isn't much, I would say, word over, but most, but most things would be dictated from the state. I know that Bruce, Bruce will talk about this later.
And this, the group that put this together, you talked about the assistant, former assistant secretary of education. It was a 40-person group that has been working on this for the better part of a year that included people in every aspect of education, literally from college professors who were doing studies on whether collective, you know, how collective bargaining would be changed by some of these kinds of systems, right on through to representatives from the NTA who participated. And this is basically what they, what they put out. And again, this was not what we provided to initially when we gave you Mark's goals, but these are the two areas that educators, teachers, superintendents, administrators are going to be evaluated on. This first area really is the sort of summative rating. And this has to do with how you, you know, how you teach. Now, this is, this is a matrix, but what you're not seeing here is the rubric that attaches to this. So when you sit down to begin your evaluation, you will understand what it looks like to be a teacher who's unsatisfactory. There will literally be a rubric that's developed. The state is going to provide us with that rubric. We have the option of adopting that rubric, tweaking that rubric, or I understand trying to make a case for a different set of criteria in that rubric with the state. And my best guess is that that's not going to be an exercise that's really going to be worth doing because the state has been doing a lot of work on this and they've got some fairly strong ideas that have been developed collaboratively with teachers and with the union about what some of these criteria are. Same with the administrators. So you're going to get two, and the superintendent as well, it's going to, you know, the administrators, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And then the other set of ratings that you're going to see is the, what's called the rating of impact on student learning. And this is student growth, student achievement. This is, this is it. Multiple measures of performance, including NCAS, growth percentile, MEPA, and whatever your system is developing, your system's going to be required to develop some of this. So this is, and then this is, this is how it gets dealt with. So if you are an exemplary teacher and your students are showing high achievements, what will happen is you will put together your growth plan. And even though you evaluated your exemplary, you will still be setting goals that you want to grow from, that you want, and that will be self-directed. And you'll be checking in with your supervisor, whoever that may be, but you're putting that together and you're going to be doing that about every two years. That's for the teacher who's here and here. For the teacher who is here and here, and that would be kind of a very interesting place, what you have is a teacher who's, who really What you have is a teacher who's, who really knows how to teach, who really knows how to reach kids, but there's something that's going on that's having an impact on kids' learning, and it could be done over, it could be anything. You will end up here. Same with proficient, where you put together a one-year plan. You're setting your goals over the course of one year, and again, using the rubric to evaluate how you're succeeding. These are the areas where it begins to get a little bit more, there's a lot more change than what currently exists. If you're a teacher that needs improvement, even if your kids are showing high growth, you will get to put together a directed growth plan. That's a, that's a plan that, you know, you're setting goals, you're working with somebody to set goals, and you're moving ahead. So, so, you know, again, if you need improvement regardless of what's happening here, your skills need to be strengthened, resources need to be there, you need to be sure you understand what it is, and the system needs to be sure that it's providing what you need. Here, you will have an improvement plan that is given to you by your evaluator. You'll have feedback and input. But this is the plan, this is what you need to do to improve, and improve significantly and improve quickly. This is the area that the state was telling us, where the plan, an improving plan, isn't going to be any longer than a year, but depending on how significant the concerns are, it can be as short as 30 days. And when we went to the panel that had the college professors on it, and had the superintendents on it, and had the principal of the MTA, they all essentially said almost the exact same thing. That we know we've got exemplary teachers out there, and we want to celebrate what they're doing, and bring everybody up to that level. And we know we've got a lot of teachers who are proficient. We have some teachers who are, who need improvement. And there are a few teachers out there who are unsatisfactory. And it, this system is designed so that those teachers who are, who are not satisfactory in terms of their skills will be given the opportunity, the supports, the clear direction, to shift, to move, to change. If they don't change, those are not teachers that are going to be kept employed as teachers. And this is a very dramatic shift, I think, in the way the state has been doing business. And this, again, you know, this was something that we heard not just from administrators at DESE, but from President of the, of the MTA, who had extraordinary things to say about how this was going to be implemented, and what he really felt was significant about this, and what he felt the teacher state was in this. So, so this is what it's going to look like for teachers and for administrators. Are there any questions? So, so there's two sets of this, go ahead, Dan.
Just, just curious as to how, how far away from what we currently do is this?
We have, we have some categories that are the same, I mean, similar. I would, I would say, I would say it's a change. I think, I would say it's a change for most districts. You know, there's, you know, most districts have directed growth plans or improvement plan. Okay, I would say that this is, this is huge. This is a sea change. This will be implemented in September 2013. And we, and we will still have to figure out what that means. Okay, because if you look at growth plans from NCAS, that's only, what do we have? It's only 19% of, of the teachers. So, but I would say that teachers will really want to start looking at data analysis, whatever data that is. And that comes up in 2013.
One of the things they said to us is, this is, you know, is, a lot of this is going to be data-driven. You're going to have input into some of the data that you're going to be looking at, and how you're going to be looking at it. And they emphasize again and again and again, this is where your data teams are going to be absolutely critical. Drilling down that data, looking at that stuff, that that's really got to become part of how we do business. And for some school systems, they're already doing it that way. For other school systems, they're beginning to get that. But, but that is, again, the sea change. So here are the four standards of practice, and each of these have a rubric. So you can see with principals and administrators, there's something that has to do with instruction. For teachers, it's curriculum planning and assessment of kids. For principals and administrators, it's kind of leadership that they show around curriculum, around bringing in curriculum, getting the resources. Management and operations here, buildings, facilities, systems to get resources to where they need to go. And here for teachers, it's what are they doing in teaching all students? It's that inclusion area, it's teaching to all kids, differentiated instruction. Here, we're talking about family and community partnerships, more kind of facing out. And here, we're talking about family, community engagement. How are we, how are we bringing families in? How are we engaging the community to come in? Again, I think that these are things, some of these are things that we have been doing for a long time, and we have been doing very well. Some of these are going to require some cultural change, in how we are bringing the community into the classroom. But these are pretty well thought out. And then again, the final one has to do with professional culture. So these are the major, these are the major goal areas that, that people are going to be evaluated by.
It gets kind of complicated here.
I'll say, uh, it's, let's get back now. These are, several drafts have been circulated for comments out in the community. And in fact, one of the things that we sent around as background information that Mark and I worked with to develop his first set of goals was a set of rubrics that actually defined what, what, what is, what a superintendent who is proficient in one of these areas would look like if, if they were being proficient. And that was taken by actually a superintendent, and Franklin took the draft that the state had put out and tweaked it for her system, and her. And these were the things she wanted to be evaluated on. Now, I, I, we've worked very hard over the years to create a superintendent evaluation system that we thought was relevant, and significant, and meaningful. And we were quite proud of our system. When that legal case about how you report out, how you do it, occurred last year and changed how we were doing things, we had to think about how we were doing things. I came away from looking at how they want us to evaluate superintendents, really happy that there were a lot of things that we were already doing, but not quite as smug as I was when I walked into the room. Because there are things that they want us looking at that are going to be very interesting things for us to look at, that had not been priorities, or had not been things we had been looking at in the kind of depth that they want us looking at. So again, this is a draft, this is effective indicators, effective teaching practice. And each of these, again, will occur with a rubric. A system, a teacher that is doing exemplary, exemplary alignment. These are the behaviors, this is what you'll see happening in the classroom. If they're proficient, this is what you see happening in the classroom in terms of interactions, you know, around curriculum planning. So, so each one of these are, are going to have rubrics. The state's going to give them to us. Again, there's some slight tweaking that we're going to be able to do, but that's the way it's going to, going to be done. So here's an example. And these are rubrics that have been developed by, by the state. Evaluation, this is exemplary, under instructional leadership for, for, this is for supervisors, right? This is, okay. So an exemplary, an exemplary leader in instructional leadership ensures that each educator has challenging and measuring, measurable professional practices, student learning goals, and an effective system for moderate progress. And that's considered to be exemplary. Everybody's got, got, um, has identified areas of practice that are measurable, that are challenging, and that student learning is happening. All of these, they have goals that really are measurable, and, and they're monitored. They're very effective, not just monitored, but an effective system of monitoring. Proficient, make sure a leader, proficient principal would ensure that each educator has measurable professional practices, student, student learning goals. So you can see the difference here has to do with sort of the level of challenge and the monitoring to go down to.
Right. So Bruce, I would say, it gets, you can see there's a lot to this. All right, so let's move to, uh...
January 10th is a very big day in the state because procedures and rubrics for superintendent evaluation are going to be released. You have seen a draft of that that has been tweaked. It was based on that rubric, that we drew the initial set of goals that we used, and then went back and cleaned them up, what you see in the second set of goals that we have distributed. The goals that are there match up with what the state is going to be producing. What we don't have, and what we will be talking about after January 10th, is the rubrics that identify what is unsatisfactory, what is needs improvement, what is proficient, what is exemplary. We will be given a template that we will look at and say, well, this, this works in Newburyport, or it would work better in Newburyport if we were also looking at this. I think we will be doing the same for the teachers, and that's where that, that having to reopen bargaining comes in, to look at those rubrics, to make sure that they're, they're looking at what, what, what's happening in our community. But again, the clear message was, there's not going to be a lot of flexibility. This is the way we want, we really want to get it done. And we worked very hard, we feel it's been really a collaborative process.
So Bruce, I think, going in with this slide, six takeaways and me dropping the workshop?
Yep. Yeah, yeah, it is. And I, and Steve, you're kind of quiet, I just...
Yeah. No, I, like I said, I mean, one of the things that I, my only issue with this is that there's a lot of dependence. One of the things that Ms. Brooks there talked about was wanting to base it on two years of data. And I think that's a great, great thing that needs to be based on a couple years of data. However, two years of data by itself can't determine a trend. So I think, I think one of the things that we're going to need to do as a school district, and work closely with the Teachers Association on this, is if we have a tool like this, to really use it in a way that's going to work within this school district. Because I think while data's good, I think nobody's going to know our school district better than the people that have worked in it or supervised in it. And that we need to really take a look at, you know, what, what is working best in Newburyport, but also within the framework here, within the structure here, how can we continue and improve that achievement improvement that this system, I guess, portends? So I think it's a, I think, I think it's going to take some melding to really have a workable tool, especially for a, a kind of a small, small district like Newburyport, where we do have kind of a history of teachers who stay with the district, you know, give back, work hard, and maybe a little bit unique as opposed to some larger districts that, that perhaps would benefit more from a totally data-driven evaluation system.
The only other thing that I'd like to, to add is that the, the big presentation of this was given at a workshop in which the, a, a study that was done by Barry Bluestone, who's the Dean of the School of Public Policy at Northeastern, and Tom Kocan, who's the George Bunk, Bunk Professor of Management at the MIT Sloan School of Management. They took a look at how, how are we best going to be able to implement this? And their feeling was that if you, if you reopen bargaining and you go to the table and an adversarial, this is our idea, this is your idea, let's respond to it, that's not going to get you where you need to go. That, that, and even, again, the President of the Mass Teachers Association was saying, we've got to learn how to bargain collaboratively, we've got to do interest-based bargaining, because that is what is really going to move this forward in a way that, that everybody is going to really feel reflects their point of view. And, and, and that was, that for me was sort of my seventh takeaway from this. And in fact, they were saying that it's going to really require a lot of conversation.
I do have one question. I know that one of the things that we left on the table in terms of this, an addendum, was the redoing the evaluation forward? Wasn't there a committee formed that was doing work on that already?
Yep.
And how far have they gotten? Or, or is this kind of all, when we found out about this, did we just stop that, or?
I would, um, we have to, we have to do a shift. Okay, of course, you'd like to have the same people involved. And, you know, answer if you're talking about the work that was done. But this is going to require a committee of people to look at not only this, but this is probably only 50%
Right, right.
of what's available. And we need to talk about slot goals, and that, either a professional goal, and a team goal, and...
It's just some of the work that may have already have been done, and that may be able to be used in working with this. So that's, I mean, that's a positive thing, right? That it's already been looked at on, with everybody.
And we actually had our meeting after Bruce and Mark attended this conference, which was in between now and the last time we met. So that's pretty much, I think, what we focused on, and that's what you're going to see here. The, the next step is, as Bruce has said, we need to develop the rubric for, for each of these goals. There are now four goals, I think. Last time we were here, weren't there 52?
Right, right, they're still, they're still there.
No, I, but see, there's been, we, we, we pulled it together, I think.
There is, there is a rubric that goes...
I was talking about teachers, I wasn't...
Yeah, there, there is a rubric that is...
Right.
There's a draft of the rubric that's out there. And again, what's going to happen on January 10th, the state's going to say, here's our rubric for superintendents and, and principals, here's our rubric for the teachers. And you are then going to take a look at that and say, okay, we'll tweak this here, we'll tweak that there, and then we'll send it back to the state and get approval from them. Or you're going to say, we have a completely different idea about what the rubric should look like. And then you can negotiate that with the state. Again, I hope that's the best use of time.
One of the things that, being the policy wonk that I am when it comes to education, typically that means I get very nervous about, I mean, it's not invented here, especially since we have a somewhat different approach to school management that other districts have in terms of our governance model. Concerned me is that this would push us in a direction that we didn't want. And after taking a look at it, a lot more closely admittedly on the administrator side, but even the, the parts that I've looked at on the, on the teacher evaluation side, I think this is some amazing stuff in that it really is providing a structure more than anything else. It's not pushing us in a direction that we necessarily would not want to go in. It's not really pushing any direction in particular, it's not pushing any agenda. But it's giving you the structure of the different areas that we need to look at. Now, yes, when you get into the rubrics definition, you might find that we need to do some massaging to fit one government system over another government system, or one approach to collaborative teaching versus another approach of teaching. But ultimately, what they, what they're, what I see here is a structure that allows for a, this is what the best practices in education administration are, regardless of the way in which you're linked and communicating and structured. And it provides a very good, I think, clear scaffold of which we can have a consistent evaluation, and also importantly, learn to, learn from other districts as well as our own in terms of where we are and, and what we need to be pushing. So I was, I was very pleased with this, with this effort.
Mark and I had access to this data about a week before you had it. We were so excited when we got it that we said, oh, this is perfect, because we can align Mark's goals with what the state is going to be asking us to do. And if we align Mark's... And if we align Mark's goals with what the state is going to be asking us to be looking at, then we will fold right into the evaluation piece. And then when we got the feedback from everybody, we realized what we had more explaining to do and we had to understand it ourselves. Having gone to these workshops, I have to say, again, I was extraordinarily impressed. I think that this is a very, very thoughtful, very comprehensive way to look at how we educate kids and how we manage that process. And I think the goals are rich goals, they're important goals, and I think that they're the kinds of goals that, you know, if you take a look at Dr. Kerbel's entry plan, you know, you could put the two documents together and draw lots of lines between what he feels we need to do and what the state believes that a good administrator should be looking at and doing. So we actually came away really, really excited, kind of overwhelmed, but very excited about it. And excited about the opportunity to sit down with teachers and have this conversation in a collaborative way.
Any comment about this? The, I would, almost everyone else in the state will start this in September 2012 or July 2012. So we're just taking a stab. We're, we're, this is going to be a new frontier for everyone, including me. Okay, so I was at the North Shore Roundtable and I think there was a superintendent in Swansville, I think she's attempting to do something similar. But it's, we're in gray territory right now. But that's okay with me.
I know that the MTA has been doing some trainings, they're starting to get out and do some regional trainings for teachers to orient them to this. I think Mark has provided some, some of this information, Newburyport Teachers Association, and has had some conversations, beginning conversations with them. January tenth, the sort of final version of the state's rubrics are going to come down and then you're going to really see what the state really feels exemplary, proficient is like. And I think then that's when the meeting will begin. Whether we do that over spaced out during our meetings four or five times or decide to pull together a workshop to develop those rubrics, that is work we're going to need to do. And again, that is also work that I believe we're going to be doing at the bargaining table with the teachers. Do you have any, so, so Mark and I are pretty comfortable with this set of goals and this framework. Obviously, what's missing is the rubric. But these are the things that we feel comfortable with Mark being evaluated. These are his goals, these are things that he really feels like he's going to need to be doing. And again, it's 52 organized in a different way, but it's.
I'm not sure it's 52. And I, I think what we came out of the meeting that we had with the mayor and this is what you have in front of you is, I think, a very good structure for evaluating the superintendent. A lot of the things that I think continue to refer to as the 52 goals, a lot of those things are job descriptions, are descriptions, they're not really goals. And so I would say that what we have here is this, this set of, what is it, 16 or so items?
Twenty.
Twenty. Much more better than 52 as far as I'm concerned.
Well, yeah.
I think it still covers everything and that we, yes, we will need to define the rubrics as to what we mean by each of the levels and each of those goals as we get more feedback from the state. And if the superintendent is comfortable with us going forward with that as part of his goals, I would highly encourage us to adopt these as his goals for the year.
In the interest in truth and advertising, what I did, and I took to be my instructions, was to take that document and sort of organize it a way that made sense. So all of the, everything that was there is still there. It's just built into a larger goal that looks at a number of different things that were sort of individual data points under one. It's now one, you know, data-informed decision-making. There were four things, or five things that were listed there, it's now just all one package.
That's, that's the difference between, I think, a goal and a job description, really.
Any comments?
I'm just curious, Dr. Kerbel, if you might comment on the new document we put there for you.
Thank you. Sometimes I'm saying to myself, what did I do? I would say that this is, this is a start in that the content is okay in terms of the format and I, probably would make sense to me would be every six weeks, at least a subcommittee would review this with me so that it remains fresh. And so, not only is it fresh because I think that if there's questions, if there's vagueness or if there's something that I need to do or whatever, I think it'd be good to at least, if we think about formative assessment, right? If we need to take a look at it every two months?
Yes.
And so that we can at least be on the same page rather than June, July, or June, you would be looking at this and saying, hmm, what did this mean?
What was he doing in September that initiated this bargaining?
You know, one of the other things that came up at the roundtable for superintendents was maybe this should be a, for all superintendents, a November to November evaluation because one of the things you'd be looking at in terms of assessment, maybe while the results don't come out for MCAS.
Yeah.
Maybe some other areas of assessment.
That makes sense, that's actually quite logical.
So it's, I would say move forward, let's keep having a dialogue. If you have a dialogue, it also keeps me focused and that we're all on the same page. Thank you for asking. I'm thanks for one thing, Bruce, you did a great job with the presentation, that was good.
Well, when I got it, it sort of, it's like literally like, oh, I get it now, this is how it all connects, it makes sense. And having, you know, having gone through at least eight iterations of superintendent evaluations, this one really was, nailed it. And Steve, you're smiling.
Well, I was just going to say it was that MASC conference that brought it all into focus.
Yeah, and I know that, you know something, and I, he's smiling because I've usually been the last person to volunteer to go to those conferences. But this was really great, this was really informative and very dynamic.
Do we want us to look at group, so that we can start this process to work with you?
Sure. We could do that now or we can get to Newbury pretty easily. There's only one difference, I haven't known you, I haven't known you because we don't need a rubric.
We have one, but we need to tweak it to.
Well, that's a tweaked draft that you have. It's good, I think the state's one on January tenth is going to look, hopefully, a lot like that, but it could be different.
What's the reality of this subcommittee meeting between now and Christmas evaluation? Because I'm just going to agree with Bruce that it might be better to wait until you have everybody who are on the team here to put something in place, or to then commit to a date before Christmas so that something gets done. That's all I've thrown out, I don't have to get a lot.
Well, I just think that there's so much in here that it would be good to have a meeting and a conversation, you know, just about what's here.
Yeah.
I agree, I'm just throwing out that it's Thanksgiving this week or this week. It's this week. This stuff needs to start.
Now that the idea is out, now she's off the calendar, she's realized.
I'm like, all this combobulated. She'd be able to pull together a meeting.
Well, I'm certainly going to volunteer to participate.
I would too.
We've got four people. Mrs. Kennedy, it was Cheryl, Nick, Mary Holliday, and myself.
Okay.
Is someone to the committee?
Yes.
It is.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion of budget, FY13 budget priorities and guidance to superintendent. Mark, how.
Well, I recognize Deidre, the assistant superintendent, so Deidre and I had a conversation about this. We felt that a lot of ground was covered the last time we talked about this line item. So, Deidre, you want to say?
Sure, subsequent to last meeting, as I had updated you on where we were in process. We've had a meeting with the principals, the principals have been giving their budget forms, their budget documents by program area, and I've asked them to work with their teams in their buildings in regards to taking a look at what they're looking at for FY13. We talked a lot about what data we needed to support their requests. And I talked a lot about evaluation of the current programs and the manner in which they're running their current programs in their building and moving those programs forward, making some changes to programs that might be one-year young, two-year young, how are they working, how are you assessing how they're working, and how are you therefore budgeting forward and moving forward? So that was a very good conversation we had with them. We've got two new administrators that will be budget development this year, so I'll be focusing a lot of time with them from providing them historical information, expenditure reports, talking to them about procurement rules, regs, things like that, and moving that process forward as well. Not hearing anything really at the state level and/or the federal level, except for the fact that there was $3 million more in ed job monies that Massachusetts got that was allocated through the Chapter 70 funding formula. It's probably under $10,000 to Newburyport.
What is that number?
Under $10,000 to Newburyport, but we're looking to apply for that, jump the hoops that we need to jump for that and get those monies into the district as well. That came out last week.
Every penny helps.
Every penny helps and wherever we can get it from, we go after it. So that in a nutshell is where we are with our budget development at the building and central office.
Can I just add, add, just add one thing or a couple things? One, at least one thing. We had a discussion about our principals working with our school councils in terms of determining the needs of the building. Deidre and I will be working together and developing a specific process that we want the principals to go through in the next four weeks. Is there anything that you would like Deidre and I to be thinking about as we move forward the budget process?
I've had conversations with the vice chair and with Dr. Kerbel about this. And, you know, I think, you know, I mentioned it a little bit on our last meeting, that having a, you know, a team of people come in and present for 10 minutes is just not really helpful, I think, to the school committee. And, you know, I think about how the city budget is developed and, you know, the months and months of work that goes to the city councilmen, they spend, you know, as much time as they want with individual departments really vetting that budget. And I think when we're talking about, you know, nearly 50% of the city's budget, I would really like us an opportunity not just to have a school improvement plan presented to us in a short period of time, but I would like to do a full-blown workshop at each of our schools where we can do a tour before the school, before the budget meetings, that we really get an up-to-date sense of what's going on with all of the schools and meet with whatever team the principal wants to bring together as we march through line item by line item of individual school budgets. And I think that way, you know, we get a much better sense of, you know, of what, have a back-and-forth conversation with each of the, you know, the councils, the, you know, principal, the assistant principal, teachers, and have them bring people who are talking about new programs, that if we need to spend two hours in a school, so be it, if we spend 45 minutes, you know, we feel like we have the information. But I would just like to have that opportunity in, in meeting with people from the schools, teams from the schools.
I would like to second that request. I think we really need to make the presentations relevant, and they need to be relevant in terms of the context of budget, what they are requesting, that needs to be tied to the strategic plan and the superintendent's century report. So when you, when you begin to pull all of this together for us to truly get a flavor of what people are looking for and why, I would say even two hours is going to be short. We need to think about the fact that we would probably need to schedule. I think that the word workshop is a good, a good word for this, where we can take half a day, literally, and we do two schools on a Saturday so parents can come as well and do one school in the morning and one school in the afternoon. I mean, I just think that that will truly enrich the whole budget process, will allow the community to have, at least be witness of the kinds of things that we're going through and the questions that we're asking and the discussions that we're having and participate as, as the school principal would like it to be. But it would be the school principal's opportunity to come and make the case for what they want to do in their next school committee, committee. So I fully support that and I would look to seeing something on the schedule where we can take as much time and not, not let time be a limiter for what we need to get done.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? So would you like to see the school improvement plans presented at the same time as the budget?
Were we also discussing a little more involvement with the city council?
Yes.
On this process as well? Can you picture that?
Well, I think they should be invited to these budget workshops with each of the schools, I think it would be really helpful for them. And then we, once we finish all of the review within each of the schools, then we should do a joint meeting.
I.
I like the spirit of all of that, but I'm going to sound like a couple of counselors on this one in that they're not necess, it's good for them to be informed about the budget, but I wouldn't want to confuse it as they're going to make this budget. Do you know what I mean? And I just.
It's information.
Exactly, and I just would want to make sure because when we said that to them before in the spirit of information, it's been misinterpreted as, I don't, we don't want to do your budget. And that's not what we're asking you right here, so we would have to, you know, put your hands up like that.
Well, if we also look at the fact that, you know, we are going to be going out to the public, to the community in the spring and to be asking them to support major capital programs for our schools, you know, a new model school for the, you know, Brezner Hand and a, you know, renovations of Doc Mullin, I think this is a process that we can truly show that we have gone through every single line item and our operating budgets are tight and, you know, are, you know, and we have done the review. And I think that that's, you know, part of some of that ancillary information that you have out there is, you know, that people aren't thinking that we do enough of a review process. And I think this might be a way, trying something different to bring people, more people from the schools into the process.
Any other comments? I do have a comment. Over the years, I would say that there's been a varying level of authentic involvement of school councils and PTOs and the creation of some of these plans and some of the budget processes, a varying level, I've heard it for years. So while I would like the principal to be able to pick who they want there, I would really encourage principals to bring in members of their school council to help make the budget presentation. Because that, for me, would address something that I've heard often on for years, not always consistently in the same places, but that those parents really are involved in these conversations. The other reason also that I would say that I like this is that these obviously would be public meetings, they obviously would have an impact on the school and the parents of those kids who are going there, but these are also meetings that could be attended by city counselors, by people in the community, who are, it's a way to inform other people in the community about literally what's happening in the school down the block. And I strongly support that. And I like, I like the model of getting out in the community and hearing about what a school needs while we're sitting in that school is very different than sitting here.
I agree. I agree.
So it's a sufficient discussion.
A good thing.
I think, you know, I think we all in our minds have some things we would like to see asked for, and I would like to allow the budget process to play out a bit more before we come up with our list. We have our next period of public comment. Everybody who is here who would like to offer a comment, now is the opportunity to meet.
Good evening. I actually, this is, I have time to just sort of bring in, sort of segue off of what was just discussed here. And I was thinking of that very point that the mayor had made in prior school committee meetings about drawing out, instead of having the presentations here, but doing those in forums, be they on Saturdays or whenever. And, you know, participating in particularly last year's, you know, forum, I, there's just such a wealth of information. There's just so much that can be learned there. We're always talking about, we have this running theme here about Superman. And so one of the things that is missing, an element is missing, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the superintendent or the body sitting here, but we almost need the clock kept, the information to get out into the community, whether it's capturing what happens via video or, you know, a way of, even with the ad hoc committees, getting it out to the community at large and generating that excitement beforehand. Because afterwards, when I was trying to call people to come to some of those forums that were back in January, you know, many didn't even hear about it. And it might be a little blip here and there, you know, and I know you use different opportunities. Now, I know perhaps there'll be an opportunity with the city website, and of course, we try, and there's information on the school website. But generating that excitement, that same amount of excitement about these forums. So I'll follow up, you know, with some thoughts, if that's acceptable to you. But I'm really, very excited about this, especially if in fact you think, and I don't know if it's practicable to do that, but, you know, you've always wanted to have those visits to the schools. So doing it in situ, you know, is such a great idea. So...
Can I just add?
Two quickies. I think in terms of this commentary on a committee or a panel of people to line item by line item or reach to each of the schools, that should involve some community members as well. I think it behooves you in a sense of transparency to allow the community to recognize that you are going through this line item by line item, because you are going to be asking for large sums of money. And fortunately, or fortunately, the monies you're going to be asking for is just mortars and bricks right now. And there's a lot of other things that are not negligible in that term that this district needs. That being said, I became aware of two interesting things today. I'm gonna continue to make my pitch for sciences. One is there was a supplemental budget released by the Patrick administration, and yes, the city has received some funds for that, probably in the order of magnitude of a six-figure dollar. In addition, there's apparently another $10,000 out there. We all sat through a conversation period today where it became clear that the science teachers are really hard-pressed for time. There may not be time to bring a lab into the high schools this year. They only meet once a month, they're probably overstretched, and their resources are slim. So I would encourage you as school committee members to take a look at those extra funds and see if you can't come up with maybe $10,000 or $20,000. I'll put you in touch with the STEM coordinator of the Northeast Region at UMass, Lowell, who has an interest in at least discussing the possibility of providing onsite science people to conduct your labs in the schools. So that's the only two things I'd like to add as pitches for what you should do here and what I've just heard today.
Thank you.
Very much. My next item is an MSBA update. Can I actually add something?
Two things. As far as the Bresnahan, that we've selected the school, we're currently negotiating with the architect. MSBA has invited the architect, the owner's project manager, and Newburyport into Boston. They want to talk about the entire project overall, the scope of the project. That meeting has yet to be scheduled, as the architect did site visitations last week, understands the needs of the educational program and how to make that educational program reflected in the building. Once she comes up with the list of questions, she's gonna send that to the district. We're gonna understand the magnitude or the needs that the architect has to make some final design decisions, and then we'll schedule that meeting up in Boston. But I would say that that would be within the next two weeks. Last Friday or Friday before, I was, I was just gonna say featured as the Superintendent Unplugged in promoting the Bresnahan School and the Bresnahan and Knock Mullen Projects with Sarah Hayden. So I sat in for Dr. Kerbel to update the community on that. As far as Knock Mullen is concerned, the RFS has been out. There is a architect meeting tomorrow at 3:00 at the Knock Library. We've had 27 inquiries to date. I had three more this afternoon. So I expect a good crowd there tomorrow in regards to the site visitation from architects that have shown at least some interest in the RFS that was published. One of the additional things that needs to happen is Steve Bergholm and I need to go into MSBA. They have their own software product that they use for the purposes of submitting invoices and reimbursing the city at the same time. You're being reimbursed real time when you're submitting these invoices. So they're using their own product that Steve and I need to attend a three-hour training on. I'm already getting some bills from Tony, so it's probably sooner rather than later that I need to get in there. They're only offering it on Fridays from 10:00 to 12:30, about 1:00. So Steve and I are gonna go in on December 2nd. So...
Bye.
That fairly is the MSBA update.
When I attended the MAS, Mas conference, I went into the room where the vendors were. I got Tom Ellis there from Harry, and sitting behind him in the next row was National Grid. Now, the National Grid guy was not having a fun time, because there were school systems that were coming up to him saying, "When are we gonna get power back?" So he was, but, so I introduced myself to, said I was from Newburyport, which happened to be one of the not badly hit. So he was very happy to see somebody who wasn't saying, "When are we gonna get power back?" And he said, "So you guys have so many projects going on?" I said, "Well, it just so happens we do this." "Oh, we really, you know, we come in there, we help, we'll pay for this, we'll help pay for this." And I took his stuff, and I walked over to Tom Ellis, and I handed Tom Ellis, I said, "There's a guy right behind you who wants to talk to you about what he can do to save us some money." And Tom said, "Well, we usually have a conversation with him." I said, "Well, you could start right now." So, so that's my update. And I met Tony.
Tony.
Yeah, I met Tony the first day there, so I had a conversation with him.
And if I could just add that the community group is, we've got three teams. One working on the campaign, GOTV, the other media and outreach is the other team, and they've brought in marketing people and have working on brochures and websites and slogans and Port Pride, and it's just going full steam ahead. You know, in fact, it's like, whoa, 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 you gotta meet with the school building committee. You gotta like talk to people before, you know, they're, you know, I mean, they're just energized and working very, very, very hard, and it's wonderful. It's wonderful to see, you know, this level of commitment. On the other hand, I had told you that Harry has also been hired. We're in the final negotiations for the OPM for the Senior Social Service Community Center. And 10 proposals came in and are in the process of being reviewed for the design of the senior center. Moving forward.
Thank you. I want to talk about boys' cross-country, girls' cross-country, girls' soccer and football sports at first. The boys' cross-country team became the Division Five Eastern Mass Cross-Country Champions. The boys and girls competed in the All States Cross-Country Meet on November 19th. The boys came in seventh place, and the girls came in 13th place. And I think it's a, that's competing against others in the state. That's a big deal. Fall cross-country is, Mr. Cole, and he can probably share with you. It's, and it's quite, it's quite the accomplishment, but not that. It's a, it's a really lonely sport. You go out there, you may go out there in packs, but you have to really, you have to, you have to really work at it. So congratulations to the boys and girls.
Can I just add a little color to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. The boys' team did meet their preseason goals, which were the KPN League Championship, which were undefeated, as well as the EMAS Division Five Championship. And the girls, it was a rebuilding year for the girls, but they also met some goals, notably finishing ahead of Linfield in the KPN League Championship, and then stepping it up one more time by finishing ahead of Penn Tucket in this recent All State. So it was a great season for both teams.
Thank you. The girls' soccer were Division Two North Champions, and that's... They lost, they lost against Canton at Manning Field under a torrential rain. I was there, and it was, the girls were just terrific. The conditions were tough, but the Canton, the Canton team, they were great, and they had some upperclassmen. I would say this girls' soccer team is gonna be great for quite a few years to come. They have some talent on that team. The rain didn't bother the girls, but it certainly bothered the rest of them.
Excuse me, Mr. Cole has a... No, just another comment, yeah, no, just in all fairness. Yeah, they went up against a very tough Canton team, and the Clippers were minus a couple of their fastest defenders. But despite that, they played very well. Coach has gone, and Kevin Sheridan are very proud of their efforts, and again, returning to prominence as Division Two North Champions.
Thank you. Football... He's the color man.
I got one more for football, too.
All right, football, let's see.
I'm not sure when she's ready to retire, but he could probably use her in practice or in the show.
The Clipper team was the Division Three Champions. Tuesday, November 29th, will be a playoff against Hamilton Witten. Steve, what do you have to say about that?
That championship was the first one in 14 years, and I think more, the big game is this Thursday against Amesbury. And on top of that, just five days later, they will match up against Hamilton Witten. And actually, Hamilton Witten has beaten the Clippers the last two years in the regular season, so this is a real opportunity for the Clippers to, I guess, make up for those losses. So I wish the team, and especially quarterback Corinna Wild, and my man Tyler Martin, a great game, a great two games, actually.
And I just want to congratulate the coaches for, it's a lot of work. You know, I can remember Coach Ed was here during the summer, unloading the helmets, unloading the belts. So it's a process that starts very early. The MAS, MAS conference, my first, was, I thought it was terrific, very, very interesting. I learned a lot. The NEF auction, which was Saturday night, was just awesome, and Stephanie and Scott Weaver were the chairs of the...
I just want to thank everyone for coming out. It was a great night, and I don't have the final figure, but we, it was very close to $60,000. So everyone was generous. There was a lot of energy in the room. It was a really great night for public education. It really was. A lot of community support.
How do you know Stephanie? The Elevations Committee is meeting soon. Thank you.
Great, Assistant Superintendent's report. We will be having an executive session.
I'm fine with my two general items that I've updated the committee on.
I just wanted to tell you that the November 8th Professional Day went great. I was fortunate enough to get to all of the buildings throughout the day. It was just a really good day. It was another day full of really good energy in our school district. And I've met with the Professional Development Council since then, and they are organizing follow-up conversations in the buildings, because one of the things we did this time around, if you remember from the agendas I gave you, there were objective stuff for the days, the activity for the day, and then what the follow-up conversations were going to be as a result of the day. So the Professional Development Council is facilitating that work in each of their buildings. So we're anxious to hear what the feedback was. Teachers, you know, we had teachers who were in district, we had teachers who were out of district. There were a lot of different activities happening that day, so they're gonna have the opportunity through the follow-up to share with one another the learning that they had. It was a good day. Thank you.
Do I have a motion? So, yeah, I'm sorry, hold on one second.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You have a meeting assessment? And I have actually one.
You know what? I don't have a Wi-Fi connection. You know what, though? If you're an alumni of Newburyport High School, there is a concert being sponsored by the NEF at the Barog, and, ugh, I don't have wireless here. Just give me one second, Bruce, and you can tap dance into the...
Let me actually look to my item. You know, as you know, the Port Media has really been challenged and has risen to the challenge of coming out here and taking our meetings sound, probably just going live. And we've been sort of talking about what some of our options are. One of the options that Port Media seems to be very comfortable with that would make their life measurably easier would actually be if we were to meet at the Knock Library, as opposed to meeting at the city council chambers. It's a lot easier for them to haul equipment, the connections are a little better there. It would make their life a lot easier, and it would still allow us to continue to meet in a school. And again, hopefully, as the Knock School plans come together, that will be one of the options that we'll be discussing putting into the school, the ability to broadcast events from the school built in, so...
And just to add to that, Bruce, I think that, I mean, I see people drive up and just can't find a place to park and leave with adult ed here. I think that, you know, people say that, "Why aren't people coming to the school committee meetings?" Because I don't think you can find a place to park. And, you know, it's, parking at the middle school where there isn't the conflict that's there, easy walk into the library and out again. I think that that's a good choice. I think it'll be easier for the equipment for Port Media. And we have, we're finishing up an RFP for, because the equipment in City Hall is dying. I don't know if you watch city council meetings, but I get a, top of my screen is black and white, and the bottom is in color, and that's because of the cameras, they're dying. So we're trying to replace those, and then they're gonna put something, you know, do a little Mickey Mouse-ing and jury rigging and try and, you know, develop a couple additional cameras for school committee. But, you know, we're moving in that, moving in that direction to try and improve our technology in public access.
The question of the meeting location, vis a vis the transmission from Port Media, was a matter that, as we discussed in the Communications Subcommittee, and really, the only concern that we had was that absolutely, school committee meetings should take place in school. And so as far as we're concerned, moving to Knock Mullen campus is a great idea.
My conversation with Sarah tonight, with Sarah Hayden from Port Media, was that, you know, how do we proceed? And I said first and foremost that Chris needs to connect with those board, with Val or whoever, and just go into the library and, you know, look at the layout, look at what he needs. And I just would ask that we have better chairs for these long meetings.
Is that a motion? I second.
Sitting in those little hardwooden chairs would be very difficult in there.
This is something we can start as early as the next meeting or hold until January?
I think he probably would need more time than that. I think we should kick it off in January, as the new school committee seems to make sense.
sense. The new chairs will be there.
Yeah, new chairs will be there. But I'll give them an opportunity, or at least get them those, yeah. Stephanie, is that one final item?
Okay, I'm sorry, I found it. It's the First Annual Alumni Porter Party for all Newbury Port alumni. It's being held Friday night, November 25th, so the Friday after Thanksgiving. It's down at the Grob. The featured alumni band is the Ground Up. Tickets are only $10, everything goes to the NEF, but it should be just a great night for, if you're a young alumnus, to go out and see your friends and catch up.
Can I have a motion that we move into executive session?
I have just one comment that I want to make. I didn't have the opportunity to say it in the public conversation. Actually, it just needs to be emphasized. I want to recognize Stephanie Weaver, because I think in the conversation where you mentioned something about Science Fair early on, I remember working closely with you back, was it 2008?
It was '07 or something. It was a year, though, right?
Right, right. Was it 2007?
Yeah, it was '07.
Where basically reorganized the Science Fair for the Brezner Hand School, and it really did become a model for which, a template for kids to follow, and I thought it was an excellent structure, and goes a long way to help kids get comfortable with presenting Science Fair projects at an early age, and it was also something that everybody was involved in, and kids really had fun. And I just want to recognize your effort in that, because it was truly outstanding, and again, a key to the development of that Science Fair experience for young kids, so...
Well, I thank you, but I gotta give credit where it's due, because that all came from Liam McGovern and Ben Hines-Lacy over at the Brown. They cast it to us. It was an unbelievable model, and I gotta say, when you're the first one to bring something to the table, you set the bar. It was great, but I appreciate that, and it's been carried on. It's part of the whole experience now for all the elementary school kids. It's great.
But you led those meetings at your home and stuff, and so...
I did, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation? We will not be returning.
Second.
Well, Paul wrote.
Okay. Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Weenie?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mayor Hawedey?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Decanta?
Yes.
Mr. Keel?